All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Please join me in the
...... to the flag, United States of America, in the Republic of America, one nation, one God, individual, liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Dean?
Here.
Gardner?
Here.
Leo?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Stanton?
Here.
Trustors.
Thanks so much. Good to see everybody. You have in your packets copies of the regular city council meeting minutes for August 22nd and accounts payable in the amount of $1,714,695.12. I'll accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. All right.
Second.
All right, motion by Leo, second by Stanton. Any questions regarding either one of those? If not, this is roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Stanton? Yes.
Also have in your packets copies of all these staff reports. New, 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 newer, newish. Really like it.
Oh, glad you like it, Madam Mayor.
Yes, the pure Michigan stuff was really neat to hear about, so this Thursday, without letting it too much out of the bag. Anything you'd like to add?
Oh, no, Madam Mayor, happy to hear any highlights or any questions that you have.
I really enjoyed the fact that we were one of five municipalities to receive the sign as to educate people on water quality. That's really nifty.
It's cool.
Very good.
Really nice to see that there.
Yes, please.
That there is a donor who is working with swing sets to provide accessible swing sets at Oval Beach.
Yeah, Scott Herbert, who's here in the audience, and I have been working with this donor to refurbish some of the swing sets at Oval Beach. We think it's a great use of a good donation.
That's great. Very good. Thank you.
Really excited to see the closure on the Verizon small cell technology and looking like there's an end in sight as far as getting Verizon hooked up with the small cell technology and finally getting better service. So that was really good to see that they actually have some dates planned for all of that. So that was really exciting to see.
All right, and also the Beach Community Summit scheduled for November the 4th. That's good.
Yeah, it's a big deal for us to get together to do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I had a question. Good evening, everybody. Who's gonna be attending that meeting? And I agree, that's a completely well-needed meeting. Who's? Yeah, so the plan is for city reps, the administrator, myself, also emergency services to join that meeting as well.
Okay.
All right, and if there's anybody that wants to attend that meeting from the public, is that open? No, I think it's a, well, I'm not hosting it, so I don't know the answer to that.
Okay.
It's a group out of South Haven, so.
Okay, it's up to them.
Yeah, I think it's mostly professionals.
Okay, and I see we have Lieutenant Ensfield online. Hi Brett. So, hi there.
Hi, how's it going?
Good, how are you?
Doing great.
You're outdoors somewhere.
Yeah.
Anything, anything you want to add to your report?
Uh, no, I think everything's going good. Just end of the, end of the summer wind down and just getting ready for the fall events coming up.
All right, very good. All right, good deal. Thank you. Thanks for calling in. All right, we have no agenda changes? Thank you. So with that, we'll move on to guest speaker. We have Jeff Slayer with us from the Calhia Yacht Club. Come on up. How are you? Good to see you.
Here in council. So yeah, I'm Jeff Slayer, the Commodore Calio Yacht Club, and I wanted to talk to you a little bit tonight about the Venetian Fest. As you know, it was a full-fledged Venetian this year. It went really well. I don't know if anybody was there from here? Okay, just to let you know, I'd like to ask you a question. How many people do you think were inside there?
Yes.
Yes. This is something me and Greg Janet go over every year because safety is a big concern of mine, and I want to thank the city and the fire department and Scott for all the hard work they did. But I, I just, do you have any idea?
Mayor pro temp, you have a guess?
My guess is 700.
Okay.
I've had guesses of 5,000 to 8,000. 2250.
Oh, nice.
Now, we did run out of alcohol about the last hour. We did manage to get another tag and we decided to shut the gate down and we let maybe 75 more people come in with no charge. So upwards of maybe 23. And my concern, I think it was fall. And like I said, that's what me and Greg work on. Not only that, with the river stuff, we had a great boat parade this year. Sometimes there's upwards of 20 boats. We had 10, I think.
Yep, very colorful, very bright.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, we do, I wanted to let, I talked to Jamie earlier about Peter. We still owe for the police department.
Okay.
For the police that supplied. So you're gonna take care of that for me? Okay. The fireworks has been a problem and it's probably gonna get maybe a bigger problem. We ran into loading issues this year. Safe Harbor let us do it for 4th of July and Venetian. So that worked out good. It was a nice, safe place to do it. So, like I said, we start planning in January. There's eight captains that are in control of certain issues at the band concert and probably over 50 people behind the scenes. So it's quite chaotic. But it did work out this year. We didn't have one complaint, one incident at the party. And like I said, up at the stage, when they left, it was just like a little snow field of cops down. Everything worked out in the morning.
Very good.
As you know, we're gonna, if there's any questions about Venetian?
Any questions, Council?
Good.
Nope.
I guess that we'll start planning in January. We did get some updates. This year was up about 15%. That was the stage fireworks and everything, and there's a planning of 20% more this year. So we're looking at upwards of 20 grand just for fireworks. So we'll keep you posted on that.
Very good.
I'd like to finish up with the chili cook-off. We were gonna be on the agenda tonight for that. We decided to cancel that because of lack of participation for the restaurants.
Yeah.
Next year, I just ran out of time, you know, so next year we'll probably put a twist on it and do something different.
Yeah.
That sound fair?
Fair enough. Sounds good. And thank, thank you for everything. I know the money that y'all raised goes to several worthy causes and we really appreciate that.
Yeah, if I may, I just think y'all did a phenomenal job. I've never seen that many people. I mean, it was just.
They were lined up on the street here, almost to the.
For blocks, for blocks.
And no one got rowdy about it or anything. They just waited. And, oh, it turned out good.
Yeah, y'all, y'all did a beautiful job. Might just, yeah, just have to give you credit.
We actually have a booklet and everything. If we decide to pass it on or something, it's just gonna make it easier for you guys, too.
Great.
Yeah.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. So, so before we move on, you're good. Before we move on, I just wanted to kind of go back to staff reports. We did this the other day, but I did want to officially welcome Ryan Cummins, Director of Planning, Zoning and Project Management, and Sarah Williams, who's our Deputy Clerk in Department of Public Works, administrative assistant. Welcome you both. If you'd like, would you like them to come up and say anything or we're good? We made them do this the other day.
Let's, let's make Ryan, let's see how good Ryan is.
Come on up here, Ryan. Introduce yourself again. This is, sometimes you could have a whole different audience online.
Well, that's true.
Pretend like this is the first time you're doing it.
All right, all right. That was my, my practice run, right? Good evening, Mayor and council members, and to the new members watching this meeting. I'm, I'm Ryan Cummins from Muskegon originally, currently reside in Grant Haven. Michigan State graduates, Bachelor of Arts degree in criminal justice, had the unique opportunities to really kind of work in some different hired roles, appointed roles, and elected roles. So on the hired front, I worked for six and a half years for the state of Michigan. Worked primarily child welfare work. So I did child protective services investigations. I was a foster care case manager. Then I oversaw and managed one of our child protective services units for a little over two years. I worked for the Ottawa County Sheriff's Department for the last 10 years on their marine units, spent several years on their reserve unit as well. I led our north end marine units for a few years until that became too much on top of everything else that was going on. But still with the marine unit, still worked seasonally for them. And then prior to coming to the city of Sagatuck, worked for the city of Muskegon for three and a half years. So started out as an event planner, so I appreciate the work that, that you do on such a, sounds like a large-scale events with that, that many folks. Planned everything from large-scale events to smaller events, national music acts. Was based out of the clerk's office, so I learned a lot of clerk's office functions, election administration, FOIA's, business registrations. And then I finished my term with the city of Muskegon as their, the community coordinator of the Muskegon Police Department, was the Jack-of-all-trades job, election, or grant administration, anything the chief needed, project management, a lot of connection with the community, community events, and, and working to connect our officers with community. On the appointed side of things, I served four years on the Grant Haven Planning Commission, and then two years on the zoning board of appeals, including some time as chairman. And then now I'm an elected representative for the city of Grant Haven and currently serve as the mayor pro temp. It'd be three years in November that I've been on the. Be a part of the team. Everybody's been very welcoming. Appreciated getting to know a few of the planning commission members so far, some of you council members, and really I look forward to working with all of you as we go forward. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ryan.
Welcome.
Right.
And Madam Mayor, Sarah is here, although I did promise her there would be no public speaking for the first two years. But Sarah, she hails from South Haven, and she's worked in the insurance industry for quite some years. And so she's dealing, she's very accustomed, I'm sorry? Oh. Great, for benefit of the audience, 10 years of insurance. Jamie, do you want to just grab the mic and swing it away?
She's in legal admin and associates in business admin.
Wonderful. Yeah, and she's super organized. And I thought Jamie was organized, but uh-oh, somebody is shaming somebody else. Sarah is the most organized in the office thus far. So I think it's gonna be quite the squad that we have going here.
All right, very good. Welcome, welcome to both. Thank you so much. All right, with that, we'll move on to public comment on agenda items only. For those in the audience, if you want to come up and introduce yourself, your location of residence, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody here? Right?
And Fox City Sagatuck. I am up here in the public comment spot to give you a report on the most recent fire board meeting, 15th of August, point by point, approved dispersments in the amount of $121,570. I hope you have your, have, have received your call volume report, but just summarizing a total for the, that month as of the 15th of August, 116 total incidents. Average response time was actually down a bit, 5 minutes 32 sec, 5 minutes 32 seconds. Motor vehicle incidents were also lower at just five, but the five were more serious than is traditionally, probably read some, read about some on the newspaper. The chief reported the receipt of a $2,000 grant from, you'll figure, Wisconsin Public Safety Foundation for a new Sensit gas detector, which actually, if it had been in place, we used the old one for the gas leak on Holland Street this week, where the gas was coming out so loud you could hear it from a black way. The chief also reported the MMR, MM RMA, which is not easy to read off, insurance bill for the coming year is up 13%, due largely to the increases in the cost of emergency equipment. It's hard to get in demand and prices, crazy prices, but I know there were comments the end of last fiscal year about emergency services costs and so on and so forth. That's the kind of thing that's, that's driving higher than what we'd like to think is normal. Chief also announced a new hire, Riley Capell, who's a second-generation fireman. He worked for Hamilton Fire, was employed there, but even before that, he worked for Hamilton Fire while he was still in high school. His father's a fireman. He, and he carries multiple certifications, which is terrific for the fire department because it saves us training costs that would otherwise be applied. In tribute to the department's excellent reputation, seven fully qualified, fully qualified candidates competed for that one open slot. And Chief Janet, the quote from Chief Janet was, we could have hired any one of them. Makes things pleasant. At the request of the American Legion, the, this in the community service kind of area, the STFD platter truck and personnel restrung the Legion post's flagpole, which was messed up at the top, and the department used that as a, as a training opportunity, equipment training opportunity. Fireboard elected its new officers, same officers for the coming year, and that's it unless you have any questions or comments.
No.
Or want to send them to me later, whatever you like. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Madam Clerk, anyone online?
No.
All right, very good. We have no introduction of ordinances, no public hearings, and no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business, the first being the special event glow in the park.
Madam Mayor, this item's on page 22 of your agenda packet. The motion is in front of you.
All right, so for, for those folks who are online or folks who were in here the other day, our Wednesday workshop, we spent a little more time going into these and discussing these, so it'll probably seem like we're moving through these rather fast, but we've already had quite a bit of discussion. So with that, the special event application glow in the park, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Motion to approve the special event application for Glow in the Park sponsored by Histopolis Productions to be held on October 1st, 2022, contingent on staff approval after safety meeting is conducted.
Second. All right, motion by Stanton, second by Dean. Any questions, comments? Great to see this event coming back. Should be fun. If not, this is a voice call vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
You want to post? All right. Next up, special event, Mount Bald Head 24-hour climb, climbathon, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is on page 33 of your packet. The motion is in front of you. I don't know if we have the, the host of the event on, on the call and/or not. We didn't hear from he or she at the workshop.
So we aren't really, we don't have anybody available to answer our questions?
There doesn't appear to be. Okay, so the motion is in front of you. If you want to entertain the motion and get into some discussion, it's up to you all.
Sure. It's up to council what you want to do. If you want to prove or deny, it's up to you. We don't really have any information. We can also move to table.
Event date is the.
Your second choice, Eric.
About four weeks. Do you know anything about it?
I do not.
Okay. Um, I would, I'd like to, I think I'd move to a, to table, given that we don't have any representative from the event here.
Yeah, I would second. All right, so a motion to table this. Dean, second by Leo. Any other questions?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I was just back to our workshop on Wednesday. I think we had a couple of questions that we wanted the event organizer to answer for us, who the beneficiary was going to be and some type of uses going to get, et cetera. So if, I don't know if, I did notice he had a email address in there. He probably does, but just simply put my notice that we.
Yeah.
Yeah. So generally, the way it works, when we move to table something, it has to then be brought up by the next meeting again. So I would hope that you can relate to this individual, how important it is that perhaps he attends.
I'm supportive. It's, yeah, just, this is a question that's.
Just, the question said where the, what, where the donation of the funds is going.
All right.
Madam Mayor, yeah, how do, yeah, how do the funds get collected and where do they go?
All right, so the motion's on the table. All in favor to table this motion for the time being, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, next up, special event, fall fundraising dinner. Hi, Ginny, I think we have you in the room, Mr. Manager.
Madam Mayor, this is on page 44. I think you have a speaker here to talk about the, the event.
Sure, you want to come on up?
So I'm Ginny Cooper, and I live in Sautdick Township. However, I'm also the president, current president of Friends of the Library. And every year we have several fundraisers, one of which is the, our fall fundraising dinner. And in the past, we've had dinners, sit-down dinners, but in the last three years, we've had takeout dinners. And we've always rotated area restaurants for this fall event. And it works so well to do takeout that we decided to do it again this year, although we probably could have sat down somewhere. And we decided to use Baldi's. And that requires, of course, us to ask for permission to use the parking lot between Baldi's and Wicks Park. And I naively thought I could just call the city and. There was a process. And it was, and I really appreciate your application because it was user-friendly. And since I didn't need to worry about fireworks or alcohol, it made it really fast. So our request is to use the parking lot on Water Street and so that we can direct traffic in and around, and we hand them their dinners and off they go. And it's worked really well. We expect to sell 100 to 110 tickets, which will probably generate about 70 cars. And every place, last year we had it at Isabel's, and it was like clock. It was beautiful. It went very fast. Everybody was really happy with their, with their meals. The year before, it was at Farmhouse. So our request is to use the parking lot. We will need at least one barricade at the street. We would appreciate signs so that people park there no later than, I would say, 3 o'clock, signs saying that that lot would be closed from 3 to 7. And although I didn't mention it in this application, it might be beneficial to have a few cones. Maybe I have a dozen cones around the.
Looking at our director of.
Too late, man. Too late for six cones. I'm sure we can help you.
You have any questions for me?
Questions for Ginny, from anybody on council. That, from what I recall, you all organize it very well with the volunteers.
We do, yes. We'll have at least eight and probably more because it's such a fun event to, to work. So, but we have eight lined up right now.
Great. All right.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Go for it.
Motion to approve the special event application, fall fundraising dinner sponsored by Friends of the Sagatuck Douglas Library to be held on September 27th, 2022, contingent on staff approval after safety meeting is conducted.
Second.
Leo? Motion by Dean, second by Leo. Any questions, comments from council? All right, if not, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. Looking forward to it. Thanks for coming in.
Question with, you had said contingent on staff.
It's a surprise. We're not gonna tell you until the last minute. Just kidding. That's the gentleman right back there in the back is who you need to like. He's your very best friend. All right, very good. Thank you. That's a good question, though. It's good to know. Fair enough. All right, last up on our new business, we have the shipo Mount Bald Head letter.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, this is on page 51. The motion is there. I will, I will say that I did send out an email to Mr. Gardner requesting information on our AT&amp;T project, and if we had to put some infrastructure at the top of the Bald Head Hill, would that affect this designation or letter of intent? I did get a response.
Yep.
And it seemed as though that it's, it's a non-issue. So happy to receive that response as we continue to work with AT&amp;T.
Great. All right, all right. I will entertain a motion, please.
I will make a motion to approve the letter of support to the Michigan State Historic Preservation Board to add the Sagatuck Gap Filler Radar Station to the National Register of Historic Places.
Second.
All right, motion by Gardner, second by Stanton. Any further questions or comments?
Madam Mayor, I would just add that the meeting that this is going to present will be on Friday, September 23rd at 10:00 a.m., like Michigan Room, first floor, Michigan Economic Development Corporation Building in Lansing. It will be also streamed via Zoom. I will send a link out to the city council and city staff for distribution for anybody that may want to attend. You also welcome to join in person. I will be joining. I will be going. I believe the mayor might be attempting to go as well. Several of the group members, the applicants, Eric Kalonik, as well as Chuck Gustafson, will also be in attendance in person. So there's a presentation that's been created as well that will be made. So it's pretty exciting. There's, we've got the agenda for the meeting right here. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven items on the agenda. And look forward to our presentation. Thanks for the support.
Very good. Anybody else? All right, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
You want to post? All right.
And one last comment, and I think the manager knows this, is that that needs to be signed on, send the letter, had me turn back to, you can either send it to me, I'll send it off to Nathan at the state, or it will be emailed directly to Nathan, so included in the packet. Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you so much. With that, we're to public comment on any, anything that's in anybody's mind. Anybody in the room want to come up, make a public comment? If so, please come up, introduce yourself. Limit your comments to three minutes. Madam Clerk, anyone online?
No.
Okey-dokey. I have next correspondence from Walts Municipal. We have, did we get something from Frank?
We did. It's on the very last page, page 54. Yeah, this was a request that came at the workshop.
Awesome. Very good. Thank you. All right, boards, commissions, and committee reports. Holly, Leo?
Might have some news for port.
We are thrilled that we have the verbal conditional commitment from M.D. And of course, there's not much more we can say because M.D. would like to release all of their, make their big announcements. And we, of course, as recipients of said $1.2 million are happy to cool our jets and follow their lead. So there will be more information coming to the public. We are still waiting for trust fund, and we will not find out about that amount. I think that's about 600 total, be 300 to the city of Sagatuck. And I think by December, we might have some indication. So, so, but, but this was the big one, and boy, have we waited a couple months for this. So yeah, we're, everyone is thrilled. I mean, I'm just so happy with all the work that the committee put in and the hours and hours of due diligence. And I just want to take this opportunity to talk about how Ryan, Daniel DeFranco, and Richelieu Bombard are working together. This is really the first try community undertaking that we've done as a sort of tackling a big topic and going through all of the legal work and partnership agreements. And it was a lot of technical work to be done and also to agree on the process of even hiring the engineer, much less hiring engineers. So it was just so many steps, but I, I am so. But I, I am so pleased, uh, I've never seen our communities working in concert as we are now. And it's, it's so refreshing and it's just a new level of professionalism. So I really have to highlight that to the community, that, that, you know, I think you guys were on the phone every Friday and, yeah, so, and more than that, more than that. But, yeah, it's, it's very impressive.
Well, congratulations to you. I'm, I think, uh, honestly, I don't think I know without your leadership, Holly.
Thank you.
It was the most pivotal thing to have you in that role. So thank you.
Well, it was definitely a group effort. Everyone helped me. But, yeah, it was, it's, it's a good feeling.
Well, I don't want to follow that. Historic District Commission, we had three applicants. Um, we approved some restoration work on a home on Lucy Street. Beautiful brick home, and they're restoring some of the original porch and a window that was taken out. So that's going to be fantastic when they finish that. Um, approved a new carriage house at the corner of Holland and Lucy Street. It's a historic home. You've probably noticed it had a lot of, uh, restoration work over the last year. Um, but they're building a carriage house, so that'll be a new, uh, you know, building on their property. And then we tabled an application for a new cottage that'll be a part of the quaint cottages on Lake Street. Um, those groups of cottages actually were kind of part of the, um, over at Old Pike, those cottages, because they're kind of right across the street from each other, kind of along that same timeframe. Um, they're just building a new one to go along with that. So there'll be one more building in there. But, uh, we tabled that until we got some more information.
Okay. Okay. Interesting. Russ?
Uh, Planning Commission, uh, we are scheduled to meet this Thursday. I'm not sure if the meeting's on. I have not received
Likely going to be canceled.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Um, also just want to note that, um, uh, Chair of our Planning Commission has resigned effective last Friday, I believe. So you're looking for a replacement for that seat?
All right. Uh, the, uh, new, um, Public Works and Parks Committee, I'll get the name right one of these days. Uh, expects to meet this, uh, this month, so we're looking forward to that kickoff meeting, um, in a few weeks.
Great. All right. Very good. Uh, the Recycling Committee, we're meeting this Wednesday. Right, the thirteenth, fourteenth, fourteenth. Um, we have the Styrofoam Collection Day scheduled for Saturday, the twenty-fourth at Department of Public Works. Everything's a go. That's from nine to three. They will be bringing that huge semi-truck again for us to fill. So, yeah. And the gist of this meeting, other than our event, is to really begin to wrap up the committee. That was really a kind of a temporary thing. So we feel like we have met the goals of the committee and it's time to call it a day. So that will, we'll be spending time kind of wrapping that up, working on the summary of it. All right. Council comments, Holly, I'll go back to you.
None at this time. Thank you.
Um, well, I would like to start, uh, Mark Becken is not here, but I wanted to thank and congratulate the Becken family. They were honored as Sagatuck Public Schools Sports Boosters of the Year. So he's not here, but I just wanted to thank and congratulate them because, uh, you know, having a kiddo in four sports, we really appreciate everything that the Becken family does and continues to do. Um, just with the new hires with Ryan and Sarah, um, it's huge because, um, you know, one of the things that during strategic planning, it's, you know, looking through what our residents really wanted as far as some of the top priorities. And that was to tackle things like Mount Bald Head Park and just having these resources to take on some of those big projects that are going to be ahead of us. Um, it's really nice to have you guys here to help with some of those big projects we have in store. And then, I think that's it. Yeah. Oh, wait, one more thing. Uh, the Pure Michigan commercial shoot that's happening, uh, this is a really big deal for our community. Um, as you know, I mean, there are award-winning commercials that, um, have been shot. And we all know that Tim Allen, um, does those commercials, crossing my fingers that we're maybe a part of that in some way. Um, but they will be here this week. They've been here all week scouting out locations, um, between the harbor and Oval Beach. And it's a really big deal that they've decided to do a Pure Michigan commercial in Sagatuck. So we're really excited about it, but I'm going to lower my expectations.
Very good. You get to be the film boat.
Yeah, I'm driving them around on, on a boat so they can film the area. So.
Very cool. Very cool. Russ?
Excellent. Yes, thank you. Um, a couple of questions back on staff reports, uh, a couple of which were asked. One is, uh, another one that, um, we were getting total spend on legal fees for the Dune Ridge project. I think you were doing a running count for us, and could you bring that back up for us at, at our next meeting, just so we can get an accounting of that? Appreciate it. Yeah, very much. Um, also too, I do want to mention that, uh, in, uh, Scott Herbert's report, two things that were of interest, uh, personally to me, the Bald Head Fence, which is, um, I think due to be completed tomorrow. It's up there over the weekend and they had the post up. I haven't been up there to see it, what the progress is. But, um, that's a really big thing. That's going to be real nice to have that all kind of sealed up and have the fence repaired and so forth. Also too, just want to note that, um, Scott has promoted Cody Hardy to assistant superintendent role. So, yeah. That's excellent. Uh, engineering also noted on the Water Street sidewalk. I, I don't know if there's been any discussion, but I've noticed a lot of people walk on the east, on the east side sidewalk and cross across Water Street over to the west side. Is there any discussion regarding maybe putting some kind of a crosswalk up there or some kind of something to keep?
Yeah.
Because a lot of, and maybe councilperson Stanton sees this too. A lot of people cross right there. So just something maybe to put on the agenda to think about putting in place. Also want to thank the engineer for the, uh, note on the category B application process. I was curious about that. So it sounds like we're going to hear something pretty quickly in September, maybe to get some additional road money. Um, also wanted to mention too, is that at our workshop, for those that were not on it, that were not in, in attendance online or the public, is that we had discussed, uh, event applications of holding the safety meeting before the event applications are presented to council for approval. And I think that was a general consensus. That was a good idea. So, um, I, I, I've, several people have mentioned that as something that would make a huge difference in terms of planning for events. Um, also I appreciate the recruitment report from Mr. Walsh in the packet. And, um, just appreciate all the follow-up. Thank you.
Uh, just once again, uh, welcome to Ryan and Sarah. Welcome to the team. I'd like to congratulate, uh, the Rotary Club for a very successful Mount Bald Head Challenge on Saturday. It was a great event, really showcases what our city has to offer. And, uh, once again, uh, congratulations to Councilmember Leo for her leadership on the Blue Star Trail. Uh, we wouldn't have gotten here without you, Holly. So thank you very much.
With that, you said what I wanted to say, so we're done. Uh, motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All right. We're adjourned. So much.